Meeting of the Minuteman Regional School Committee. The primary purpose of today's meetings is to attempt to select a new superintendent for this school, whose contract would theoretically start July 1st. This has been a very complicated meeting to prepare for. I'm sure that I will leave out a lot of important things, except I have plenty of people here who will let me know in no short order if I say something dumb or leave out something important. So I am very thankful for that. I want to welcome all here to this meeting. It's been a long, actually it's been a short but intense road to get here. It seems long, but really it hasn't been that long in terms of weeks, but it's been very, very intense from the start of the screening committee until today. And so I'd like to say a few thank yous at the beginning of this meeting because I might be too tired at the end. So thank you to the call-in center, Ryan and John. Yeah, we can start the meeting now, yeah. Thank you to the screening committee. Now, what the screening committee did was primarily in private. So you didn't get to see how well and professionally that group of people worked together. But I can assure you, it was quite a good experience to work with them. I'm going to shut Siri up now. I don't like Siri. Let's make sure this doesn't go off. I won't need you for a while. I want to thank Pam. I want to point her out, I am going to point her out especially because she was the one who ran the screening committee and all those meetings. And I think that the tone that she created was professional and serious. And that helped the other members know how to behave, especially on the original screening committee when they might not have been used to this sort of thing before. I'd like to thank all the candidates who chose to apply for this position. And I would also like to especially thank the finalists. This is not an easy process for them to go through. And it requires a lot of courage, especially on the day they came to the school, which started at 11:00 a.m. I think that most of them had a very good time until 7:00 p.m. They ran into our questions on the, from the school committee. And from 7:00 to 9:00 after that long day, they had to answer a lot of tough questions under a lot of pressure. And so I want to thank them for going through that process. I hope that it was as pleasant as we could make it. I want to thank the finalist communities who warmly received the school committee members who may want to steal one of their valued administrators. I didn't know what kind of reception I was going to receive, but it was very warm. I want to thank the Minuteman Superintendent, students and staff that made the candidates' visit fantastic, of course, until they came to us. I want to thank all those who took part in the Q and A sessions with the candidates, the teachers, the staff, the parents, the students, et cetera. We did watch all those videos. So we saw the level of participation there. I want to thank the MFA for their participation in this process. I want to thank the school committee members, especially those of you who have not been through this process before. Did you think this is what you would be doing when you first signed up for this? Probably not. And I want to make a special shout out to those who submitted written comments. I'm going to be honest here, I was dreading the written comments. And the reason I was dreading them is that in the age of the internet, especially if you can be anonymous, you know that things can be very unpleasant and unprofessional to an extent that we're still often shocked by. So I did not know what we were going to receive when the 130 or 50 comments came in. But what we got was a series of almost uniformly, well thought out, reasoned, professionally written comments. It was the exact opposite of what I had feared. And in fact, I have to say that actually, after being kind of exhausted by this process, it really lifted my spirits when I saw the thoughtfulness that went into those comments, whether I agreed with them or not. So I want to especially thank the people who wrote in on those public comments and definitely gave me a new lease to keep going in this process. Okay, now, today is going to be a very unusual meeting. So here's a, just a summary of the order that I think we should be doing things in. The first thing is that we're going to have the visit reports. Okay? Which none of us in the school committee have heard whatever anybody else has seen so far. So we're going to be very interested in that. Then we're going to have what I call the go-arounds. The go-arounds are the first time that we're going to actually express our opinions of the candidate. And every school committee member is going to have some time to express their opinion on what we should do moving forward and why. And there may be several go-arounds because one of the main pieces of information we do not have are the thoughts of our fellow school committee members. Now, harkening back to the screening committee, when we were choosing the nine candidates for interviews, I was surprised at how many important things I had missed that the other people around the table had caught. And that did make a difference in how I viewed the nine people we were choosing for to interview. So that could very well happen here when you hear the thoughts about things that you have missed or not thought of, even though we spent so much time in this process. So we're going to do a go-around and then we're going to, you know, think about that for a few minutes and we may then do another go-around, depending on how things pan out. So it could be several rounds of the go-arounds. Then when I, when we feel, we feel that we're pretty much at the stage of making a decision, then we will have a vote and possibly a reconsideration of the vote, and I'll explain that later. Then, assuming that we have selected a candidate, which is not guaranteed, we'll call the candidate and ask, "Do you really want the job?" Hopefully we'll get a yes, and that will end this process. Now, following that is going to be a brief executive session because we have to launch the negotiation process with the candidate. And that's going to have a Philly-type timeframe too. So it'll be a very brief executive session, we'll be pretty tired at that point, I won't keep you for long. Okay, are there any questions on that ordering of events for this evening? Okay, so I got some questions on how we, how we should do the site visit reports. And we discussed that a little bit of our last meeting, I said I repeat my comments at this meeting. So I believe that each team was two people, is that correct? Okay, so both members will give a report. Because they may have different impressions or different things that they remember. What should be in the report? Well, the report should probably be three or five minutes, somewhere around that timeframe, a little longer if necessary. And you should state, how did the visit operate? And what, what did you learn? What are the factual things that you learned that you thought were important? And your impressions that you thought were important, and that's it. And we'll do that candidate by candidate, okay? So we'll do both reports of one candidate, both reports of another, both of those in that. Anything else you think is important to say about the visit? But don't be upset if you miss something, since there are going to be plenty of chances this evening to fill in the blanks. So you don't have, if you thought, "Oh my, I forgot to say this, it was very important", you're going to have plenty of time when we do the go-arounds and later to make your comment. Any questions or comments about that process? That seems straightforward enough? Now, I have a question, who wants to go first? On the site visits, which... Okay, so we're going to start then, and which site did you visit? I happen to know this.
So just by way of context for folks, the viewing public, this is Sarah Montague. I'm the representative from the town of Arlington. My son, Jack, went to school here, graduated last year, he has a different last name. And so I've been on the school committee since July. And the, let me just provide a little bit of context for the site visit itself. So we didn't dictate what we wanted, we wanted to see how it would unfold, how would they tell the story of the candidate. And so when Jeff and I got there, there were there were, there were two hours allocated for us. So first we started with the superintendent, then we went into a conference room where we stayed there and groups of people came in to us. And it was constituents that represented students, parents, the union, school committee member, union steward that manages all the complexities of the buses, department chairs across the district, a principal of the middle school, a high school bio teacher who was new in his career, been there three years, an English teacher, very seasoned, the administrative office team. And what, what I was keen about was how we could dig a little bit deeper into some of the initiatives that we learned about through the process. So how did it start? What was the problem? Was something broken? Did, did the effort and collaborative thing that you all did, did it fix things? How's it working? And then I looked, we've, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say that we visited, that, that would help. So Situate Public Schools, okay? So it's the candidate, Heidi Driscoll. And my apologies, thank, no, thank you for stating, stating that, that's fairly obvious. But I guess, anyhow. So what I was looking for, because in my mind, everything started with the, the vision of the superintendent profile. And that led to the vision of the kind of questions that we ask at school committee meetings. So I went back, you know, I did rubrics for everything. And I looked at, when I looked at leadership, growth, vision and collaboration, we were looking for very specific examples, we were looking for quotes, we were looking to understand what happened in that project, tell us more. So the types of things that we heard was her leadership skills, she sees the vision, but can break down complex things into, you know, bites that you can, you can kind of handle. She coached me on how to deal with a difficult personality. She's really intelligent, she forecasts things, forecasting in a positive way. She sees things that might happen before they actually happen. She fixed an evaluation system, it saved us so much time, we could focus more on other things we should be doing. She ensures that stakeholders are bought into the vision and then she lets people go and do their thing. She, she leverages the strengths of the staff that she has. She looks for opportunities to give them stretch goals too. But she leverages people's strengths, she gives them confidence that they can do the job. And then she says, "Here's the vision, people are bought in, now go do it." And go do it in a, "I know you can do it" kind of confident way, not a punitive, "Now, now go do it." There was conversations about collaboration in that everybody had a chance, all constituents, stakeholders, much like this process here, had a chance to weigh in. And she can, you're able to change her mind. If she, you know, has conversations with people and says, "Okay, you know what? Project X may not be, may not be the right time, it may not be as effective as we think it's going to be, it may not give us the kind of change." So it's not her way or the highway, which is really important. She communicates early, she has built relationships with the union, she's built relationships with the business office. They have meetings staged to discuss things before she meets with the union on a monthly basis. So there's no surprises, there's calm communication and collaboration about what's possible. The words "go slow to go fast", which is a fascinating book, I recommend it actually, but it's, it came up consistently. It's not about change for change's sake. It's how are we going to put things into place so that we are a better community, better processes, and we can focus on teaching? Because at the end of the day, it's about the students. She's like a detective, but this was a positive thing. She found resources for us that we were supposed to be using that the district didn't even know about. So that was when she came in new and she uncovered something where the teachers were like, "Holy mackerel, that's changing, we didn't know about it." She's described as fair, firm, kind, and not afraid to change her mind. She's passionate, organized, accepting of everyone. These are not my words, these are the words of the stakeholders that we met with. She was, there was a gentleman who runs their DEI initiatives. He used to be dean of students at Brandeis University. He said, "She's a game changer." She's solid, solid character. I think, I don't want to take up too much of your time, so...
If you have, we're, we're going to go slow in this, on the visits and the first round. So we're going to be here for a while. So if you feel that you've said enough of the specifics you want to, that's fine. But if you want to go a little further, you can.
Important one, so we dug a little bit deeper when they were going through the MSBA, when they were looking at the renovations of the buildings. And it was, it could have been like a sticky wicket because redistricting could have been an issue, right? But she, you know, we were told she went out and communicated, out and communicated to stakeholders. So again, goes out and communicates, shares the philosophy, shares the vision, gets people on board and understanding, takes the time to make sure that people feel heard. And they built, which I looked at, I didn't bring a copy with me, but they built a communication matrix on their website, which is really public facing, which is really important. So you know, if you're a parent, you have a problem in the classroom, you start with the teacher first. These things happen, that's when you go to the principal. You know, what's the role of the superintendent? What's the role of the school committee? And that clarity and constant communication that they have out there to all of their stakeholders lets people teach because the parents have a better understanding of who to go to for what issue.
I was the other visitor for Heidi Driscoll. And one of the things I like to take advantage of is when we have this static materials, you know, what the candidate writes and all the recommendations, you know, you don't know how accurate the picture you get is. We do have the interview with them, but then that's just us and them, it still does not tell you. So when you go on a site visit, it allows you to kind of peer behind the static materials to what's happening. And so you'll look out for a few things. So who are the most, the things that caught my attention the most are, I guess, the first one's not that unusual. They have, the, the range of the people brought in was extremely wide. All the way from, as she says, teachers, a person in charge of transportation, I say so. Wait a second, so part of this means that you're the one in February, under the bus, in the snow, getting it to work. And he said, "Yes, that's, that would be me." So he was involved with the union as well, I believe. So the range of people that, and of course, you know, you, you can choose the ones who like you the best, but the range of people kind of precludes the fact of that this is not a widespread view. So I was very impressed by that, I was impressed by the consistency of their comments. The consistency of the things that they strongly thought positively about her. And a lot of them were about putting systems in place. Now, I'm going to put my teacher hat on for a minute, for a couple of minutes. Because as I said, I just retired from being a teacher from Newton South, where I was a teacher for 23 years. And one thing that teachers often dread is a new system coming in. These systems are imposed on us from the state, from the central office, from the local office. And often when a new system comes in, it's not really geared there to make us, our lives better or, or to make us more effective. So when you hear about the bringing in a lot of new systems, it kind of raises a red flag. So that's one of the issues I explored. And consistently, the answer I got was, she, she, we, or we asked for a system or she found a need for a system, whether it's a system of evaluation, which is the guy involved in transportation was very excited about. I said, "You're excited about a evaluation system?" He said, "Yes, it was so inconsistent among all the schools in Situate." And it was, we didn't like the system, we didn't think it was effective, it took too long and it was inconsistent, and she came in here and she fixed it for us. I heard the same story from the, the English teacher who teaches AP. I heard the same story about teaching kids how to read. So we heard that story about how she took an area that might normally be unpleasant for a teacher and made it more pleasant. I said, "Okay, so when, when she was helping you with this particular system here", when I asked this very specifically, I said, "You know, often we don't like systems so much. So did she like rush to implement this and, and, and did it really help you?" And she said, "No, she didn't rush." I wanted her to move faster, but she said, "No, we have to prototype it, we have to show it around, we have to beta it, we have to get feedback before we're going to like really move ahead with this system." So that impressed me a lot because that's not usually how it works. Often in a school, they'll impose something on you, whether you like it or not, and it's usually not helpful for you. And this was the exact opposite thing, so that really caught my attention quite a bit. The other thing that was pretty consistent is her ability to push back without pushing back. And that what I, what I meant is that they were, that, they were consistent again in saying at times when she had to push back at us, she made it very pleasant. She did it in a, in a way that that brought us into the, into the system and did not make us feel that she was pushing on us. So she had this idea of what I would call a quiet leadership. Not to be confused with lack of energy. There's a lot of energy behind it, but her interface with these people was generally quiet and calm and listening. And I'm also going to mention a comment by the director of DEI, another thing that stuck out in my mind. So the position in DEI can be very disrespected at a lot of schools. And it could be the administration do this all the time. Check, we had the DIA, EI thing and now we don't have to worry about it anymore because we've got the position and we've got this policy or whatnot. So what he said to me, and he said it very clearly, his comment was, "One of the things I really liked about, about her is that I never felt abandoned." Meaning that he was important to her and, and she did not just ignore him because it's unimportant or she could or anything like that. So that to me is a judgment and a character issue. And he said it in a way that kind of implied that that's what often happens in these positions, that he's seen it many times before. So I'd say that I got a, so, so those were the takeaways. And the other, the other big takeaway was, I'm comfortable with the fact that the, the recommendations and the things that she said to us are an accurate representation of how she is viewed in the school and how she has worked in the school, which is to me the most important thing to get out of one of these visits. Okay, I think that's, do we leave anything out?
I thought of something I want to just note. The science teacher, who was new in his career, had been there for about three years. He stated that she brought in a biomedical science program. And he talked about it a little bit. And then he said something, you could just see how his face changed. He said, "I feel great teaching with this program and knowing the students love it makes me incredibly happy." So it was something he got excited about as a science teacher. And then knowing that the students are really engaged, sort of that closed loop, you know, that classroom experience, you got the sense that classroom experience, as the teacher described it, was very positive.
Thank you, so that is the end of the visit for Heidi. Who wants, which team wants to go next? Who is, who is on the team and who are we seeing?
Sorry. So my name is Charlene Cabral and I represent the town of Lancaster here on the school committee. And both myself and Sharon Musto went to Monty Tech on, what was it, Monday? Monday morning to speak to the team for Christina Favreau. And much like Ms. Driscoll's team, Ms. Favreau's team was comprised of people that would represent different segments of the population. So she had obviously the superintendent and the principal there. She had students, she had support staff, academic teachers, people who represented the union, union relations. She had people who represented the career tech side and continuing education. She had also new programs and budget and finance. So it was all organized nicely so that we could ask sort of pointed questions or specific questions regarding those topics. Some of the things that came up again and again was, well, first of all, a little anecdotally, when we arrived, the first interaction we saw with Ms. Favreau was she spoke to a maintenance individual in the hallway who clearly had his arm bandaged up. And she asked him how he was doing and he told her and he said, talked about his upcoming surgery. And it was clear to us that she cared about the people in the building. Everybody, not just the people she worked with. And although Sharon and I discussed that very briefly before we spoke with anybody else, as people were coming in, that theme was, came across time and time again, that she's very caring about everyone in the building, that in times of personal crisis, she is tough, she helps everyone. She, the students stated that she makes you feel valued and important. She is very considerate of your concerns, she's helpful and always advocating for students. Some of the, I gotta put these on, I can't read my own handwriting. So one of the other things that came up time and time again was that Ms. Favreau does not make quick decisions and she can be very easily misunderstood because if you go to her and ask for something, she won't give you a yes or no. She'll work on it. And sometimes you may be stepping away thinking, "Oh, she's not supporting this." And what you don't realize is that she's actually supporting you, she's just trying to figure out how she's going to make it happen for you. So that was something that came up time and time again, that she's very considerate, she's very invested, she utilizes her assets, which is her staff, she trusts them, she allows them to be independent. Her door is always open, she's good during crisis. But the communication thing, you need to know that she needs thinking time, she's very thoughtful, she's not a micromanager, but she is not quick to make a turnaround. She, she will use her time to consider all opinions and viewpoints and to figure out how she can help her teachers be more successful. She consistently inspires us to look outside of our safety and comfort mode. She checks to see the kids that are in front of you and what will work best for the student. So she tries to help the teacher help the student. Again, she's not impulsive, it's never a no, it's always, "I'll get back to you." She will give you reasons why. She supports teachers. There was an individual from the, the career and tech part of the school who part of the um school who had an issue with his license. And even though Ms. Favreau works specifically in curriculum and academic side of the table, she went across the hall, so to speak. She helped him and he said that he is eternally grateful to her. Um because it wasn't in her purview, it wasn't in her job title to do that. But she saw that he needed help and she helped him um get that licensing in place. She also helped with other programs at the school. Uh there was summer school, English immersion. Areas for growth, because we asked those questions. Um areas of cro- growth is understanding more about the vocational side of things. Um and that she has not had the opportunity yet to have to uh go to town meeting and sell anything. They said that they believe that she is capable of doing that, but she hasn't had that ex- that experience yet. Uh I don't know if I've missed anything, Sharon.
I think you took most of my quotes. Um so I'm Sharon Musto from Lexington, and um I would agree with everything that um Charlene just said. A lot of the themes were that, you know, she's not top down. Um if you go to her, you know that there will be action and that she will support you. Uh one of the students told of how she was struggling and trying to determine whether or not she should stay in one of the classes. And um she said that Ms. Favreau sat down with her, gave her copies of the upcoming books for the English class to help her get a better understanding of what would be coming up and what she could expect to make her decision about whether or not to stay in the class. Um ultimately, the student said she decided not to stay in the class, but Ms. Favreau gave her the books to keep that she might want to read at a later time. And that that was really important. She said she's always in the hallway. There's this place called the Four Corners where the kids are always walking through and that she's always there and ask, you know, talking to everybody about have a nice day. Um again, the theme of doesn't make a split second decision came up a lot. She takes it all in, makes decisions. There was also a theme of um like that she's she's grown a lot in that capacity of being able to like truly listen to the faculty and then um come back to um explain why she's made a decision that she's made. Um I thought as as far as telling of who we saw, she, if if you recall in her interview, she spoke about um a faculty member that they had sort of butted heads with and then she worked things through. So he was a member of the faculty that came to see us. And he definitely said that um she's definitely gotten better over time as far as like hearing criticism, that she was very good at listening to his criticism. She doesn't always agree with me, but we're all, she's always respectful and we now have a very good working relationship. Um another teacher mentioned, or actually, I'm sorry, this was a um, yes, another teacher mentioned that her goal is always an amicable relationship and that she really wants to work with others, not search. The director of continuing education said that she's been extremely collaborative in working with her because there's all the um the space that needs to be used and shared by the daytime and the evening people and that she's been very collaborative of that and that frequently when continuing ed is finishing up for the night, Ms. Favreau is frequently in her office still as well. So she's one of the few daytime people that are usually there at night. Um Another thing that was noticed is that on the vocational side, um it was the HVAC and property maintenance teacher was talking about how they had a related classroom that was essentially, they were joking that a part of the building was in one town and the other part was in another and that the shop was on one end and the related classroom was on the complete other end. And so it took a lot of time and she overheard that. And then um made a point of finding them a room that was half the distance closer and is still working towards getting them even closer. So there was this theme of like she hears about the problem, like she overheard that teacher with a certification problem, talking about the certification and said, I've got this, I'll help you. Um and it was very instrumental in getting him um a hardship waiver for his certification. So um the other thing that came up was the the tech support during COVID and that she then built out that tech ed to make sure that teachers always had access to somebody if there was a problem with technology. One person did say that um she was very instrumental in the dual enrollment and that she was like the face of the school. But again, the main idea that I heard was just the truly thoughtful and methodical. And that if you bring something to her, you know it's going to get done. Like that's, that was my morning.
And now the afternoon?
I'm gonna let Pam start with the afternoon.
Um, yep. For Katie Whitaker. So Pam Nurse from Acton. So like the others, we met with a wide range of people. We met with the principal, assistant principal, director of technology, guidance counselor, um uh vice president of the Teachers Association. We met with admissions staff, administrative staff. We met with a couple of students, um special ed CTE and academic teachers and the business manager and the um superintendent and a variety of teachers um in there as well. And to say that it was a positive site visit is a understatement. People were positively glowing about Katie and just you know, and when we would have a couple of people together, they were almost jumping over each other to talk about how much Katie meant to them, meant to them personally and what a difference she has made um in the school and the school culture. And I walked away being truly blown away with the enthusiasm enthusiasm for Katie, for her partnerships and the impact that she's had on Monty Tech. So one theme that came up very often is that she's someone who gets things done. She sees problems, no matter how big, how small. You know, she will get them done from, you know, it could be promoting school spirit. It could be fixing the bulletin boards in the hallways. You know, um supporting school, the Students and Skills USA. Two of the larger initiatives that we heard about um several times were highlighting Katie's really critical role in establishing their um veterinary program and how she was involved in, you know, just involved in the program, you know, soup to nuts. Um and also an initiative that um that they're working on now that was Katie's inspiration. They're calling it their MVP program that so that they can be providing CT education to more students in the district beyond what can, you know, fit within their regular programs. Um a lot of excitement about this um about this initiative and, you know, we were told by several people how it was Katie's idea and, you know, she's driving it forward. Many people talked about her creativity. Um but that she doesn't just, you know, generate ideas. She has a good understanding of how to, how things work and how to make things work, that her communication is very thorough and is a strength. One of the people that we met with is actually a um Minuteman alum. And um my quote from him was Katie would be the best thing to happen to Minuteman and it's exactly what we need. She can bring Minuteman to the next level. Staff, staff and the students, we talked to, talked about one of her initiatives, which is to you know, to set up a pantry where um students would be able to get kind of free things, you know, in a pantry. And it was her idea. She um went out and found a business partner with CVS. Is get, found the space in the school, is getting it set up. One of the students we met with is helping on this. You know, and she was so excited about this and just had nothing but positive to say about, you know, her partnership with Katie to make this happen. We also heard about she does a lot of the advocacy for the school in meetings with legislators, um chambers of commerce, um um other member communities. She sees a problem and she wants to tackle it. That, again, something that came up over and over again. One of the teachers described how she went from um, you know, um class to class to figure out what professional development is needed and then work to be able to provide that, to be able to bring in um get the resources to provide that professional development. And also um remember that having professional development for the administrative staff is important as well and included in terms of getting the resources for professional development, the administrative staff. Um she was described as a lifelong learner, a lot of energy, but she also was described as someone who does her homework before jumping in, you know, doesn't just jump feet first to do something. She will do her homework and, you know, and develop a, you know, a strong understanding. You know, the students described her, you know, very friendly, diplomatic, someone who listens to them. Um we heard about, you know, what I basically call good judgment and like how to move things forward. Um Um she was described as as someone who is very open to feedback. If someone has a different idea or a different way of doing things, you know, she will listen. Um and it, you know, and is very adept at handling, you know, difficult conversations. So um and, you know, the other thing we heard over and over again is that she is absolutely ready to be a superintendent.
What did I miss, Sharon?
You didn't miss anything. But I will say what was really, um, I was very fortunate to be able to be at both the morning when we were meeting with people for Christina Favreau and the afternoon when we were meeting with people for Katie Whitaker. And there were even um a handful of people that I saw for both candidates. And after the first group of people left, Pam turned to me and was like, is this what it was like this morning? And I said, not to this level. Um it was just effusive of positivity is, I guess, the way that I would describe it. Um similar things, you know, doesn't like to take no for an answer. She'll find a way. She's in contact with the community at the district level. She is not a not my job kind of a person. She's extremely knowledgeable. One of the things was funny, um I, they were talking about how she doesn't just have like a B plan, she's got a B and a C plan. So she knows i- if A doesn't happen, we're going to have B and C and she's always prepared with what can happen. Always thinking as somebody's talking about something, she's thinking of all the different ways she can go and I can find a grant for that. Um I think a word that came up a couple of times that I thought was very important was that she um one of the oh, it was actually, it was the Minuteman alum who said that she empowers students and works with faculty. Um not above them or below them, but are, that she's very much so um in about empowering others and that school culture is really important to her. We also heard a number of times that Katie is like the person behind the scenes that a lot of things that you, if you see that it got done, you're like, yeah, Katie had her hand in that. Um again, you mentioned not afraid to ask, to keep learning, not afraid to ask. She got the school store set up kind of like a, like a university store type, and within the first fifteen hours, it sold ten thousand dollars of merchandise. Um and there were just, people were amazed at that. Um they said that she sees a problem and she's ready to fix it. The students referred to her as a doer. And I thought the best quote that they said was that she gets us what we need to learn. So that, I thought that was really important. We also heard about how she's incredibly easy to talk to, has good communication, is very honest. Um excellent at grant writing, which we heard over the time, time and time again. Um she's very supportive of various different groups. School climate is very important to her. We also heard about how she's a great lecturer of her peers. She teaches some Mava classes. Um and they thought that her classes have been very um very good courses. They've learned a lot, that she's frequently will look at people and say, how can I support you? Um and then like an overall from the, I think it was from the business manager and the superintendent from that meeting, they said that, you know, she knows the vocational aspects. She knows the regulations. She knows the processes. Um she's got tons of community and industry contacts. And again, that she's always looking for feedback, even if a meeting seems to have gone well, she'll say afterwards, was there anything you think I could have done differently? Um so I think the the level of positivity from that meeting, I also, I left feeling very um very just energized and really excited about her as a candidate.
Steve?
We have an opportunity to maybe ask some follow-up questions from you folks?
Um follow-up questions at this point or when we do the go-arounds? Uh you can ask follow-up questions about the visits. We're not going anywhere. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I I this is uh for the Monty Tech uh uh visitors. Um you know, it's really unusual that we have two finalists from the same uh same school. So did you guys get any sense of how the two candidates interfaced with each other at the, at the school?
Thank you. I did ask um how the relationship has been since both of them are competing for the same job. And the super superintendent and principal said that they're getting along just fine. They're both very excited. Uh very, very excited, like, you know, kids at in a candy store or kids at Christmas or something. Um that they're both just gushing, uh but respectful of the other and that it being very professional. So um it was nice to hear.
I guess, I guess my real question is, forget, forget the fact that they're candidates here. On a day-to-day basis, do they normally work together, you know?
Um, I don't think that they work too much together because of Ms. Whitaker is more on the career tech side, on the vocational end. And Ms. Favreau is more on the curriculum end.
I think if, I think Ms. Favreau is more like inward facing and more, and Ms. Favreau or Ms. Whitaker is more outward facing as far as, you know, in involved with a lot of the businesses and community. But they both were very um intentional about saying that they completely respect each other and that they know that they each bring different things to the role and that um should one of them get the position, that they would be very supportive of that person, that they were very respectful about that. Um and I, and it didn't seem like, I'm going to say this because it's the right thing to say, like, it really felt like they truly um respected each other and knew that they um they both had significant strengths. So.
Okay, thank you all. Yes.
I have a question actually for um Pam and Sharon about uh the Katie part. Could you tell me if you have notes on this um about the special education, what the special education person said?
Yeah, he said um that she was very supportive of Skills USA. Her, she, he's the one that mentioned um her communication, that she's very easy to talk to. She's honest. She's get thing, gets things done, very creative and excellent at grant writing and getting them what they need.
Yeah, again, he um he said that he feels like she has a good um understanding of how things work and is constantly looking at, as Sharon said, what do they need? How can she help get them the resources, you know, so that the students are able to get what they need? You know, I asked about, you know, the specific and he, you know, I tried to dig down, well, you know, what does she know about faith? And of course, he was like, I don't know what she knows about faith. This is what I can tell you. You know, that she knows how um she understands the system and, you know, she knows how to get us and is always wanting to get us what we need.
I would say the only other thing was that um when we did ask um one of the groups of the people that we had, who are actually the the three that work most closely with her. Um, you know, what would you see as her greatest hurdles should she be offered the job? And one of them just said that, you know, um she would definitely benefit from that mentoring new super superintendent program and that while she would probably need to, some time to learn more of the rules and regulations related to sped, that she surrounds herself with good people and that um she's a, you know, a quick learner and she's not afraid to keep learning. So they didn't have any reservations in that area, but definitely said it would be an area that she would need to learn more about.
May I add a note related to special education for Ms. Driscoll? So we were potentially going to meet with nineteen people. And some people got called back into the classroom or things came up. So um the director of special ed was not actually able to meet us, but wrote a letter. So remember, Jeff, the folks that So remember Jeff, the folks that couldn't actually meet us wrote letters and he did.
Talking about the additional like recommendations that we submitted to you a few days ago, that we gave a real notice that we're there.
So, so his, his comments were, you know, thinking outside of the box can generate solutions. She's very knowledgeable about special education. So all documentation that you have seen. So I just wanted to make a note that that, that point was covered, even though the gentleman was not physically in the room with us.
That was just the appetizer. I have a few quick notes before we move on. I want to mention for the record that the Collins Center has performed reference checking, is that correct? On all three candidates and all three candidates got a completely cleaned report. So note that was done. I'm not going to respond to anything that happened during the various interview videos I looked at, except for one. Because it came up again and again, it was answered during those videos, but I'd like to answer it this session was, will the incoming superintendent be able to participate in the selection of a new principal? And the answer is going to be yes. And one of the reasons of the timing of these processes is tight is because we had to start the process for looking for a new principal before we chose a superintendent or were likely to lose candidates because of the timeframe. And yet we didn't want it to extend till, you know, after we chose a new superintendent. So the, the acting, the current acting superintendent, Kevin Mahoney, came to me and we discussed this process. And we came up with a timeline in which it could work. Because it's very important that the incoming superintendent have a whole lot of input on that issue. So the answer, the only thing I'm going to answer from all the questions that were raised was yes, the intention is for the incoming superintendent to help select the, the incoming principal.
All right. Do we want to have the people who were here for the tours on the visit days that give any feedback on, because they saw all of the candidates as they walked through? Is that anything, information that would be helpful?
We're keeping it to just the people who've talked here.
Right. No, what I'm saying are, we had, we had consistent school committee members that were here for the visits. Is it worth hearing any of their anecdotal stuff?
Somewhat disinclined to do so because of events that were beyond our control. The experiences might have been very different. And we did get to see the sessions in which they talked to the, the parent group, the faculty group. But if at the end of this, you think that's going to make a difference, we can, you know, ask them if they think that they could do so. But right now I'd like to continue with the processes outlined. And then later on, you can decide if you really think you need another thing to add to it. Who did give the tours by one with them? It was you and who else? Do you two believe that your comments would be pertinent and useful?
Something comes up in the discussion where a pertinent comment is capable of helping.
Great. So the next step, now that we've heard these interesting site visit reports, next part is the go-arounds in which you get to state your opinion for the first time. So the, the go-arounds are going to be by our usual order, alphabetically by member towns. The purpose of the go-around is for you to share your opinions and reason, and reasoning about your candidates, candidate, candidates of choice. I will have a few suggestions on this in a minute. Three to five minutes should be enough, but I'm not going to, I don't have a stopwatch out. So if you need more time to get your thoughts across, then go ahead and do it. Again, one of the most critical pieces of information you will receive at this meeting are the opinions of your fellow school committee members. So we should all keep an open mind until the very, very end. Now, because of some comments I received from members here, I'm going to make a few, a few notes that you can completely ignore if they make no sense to you, which is something you've all shown to be very skilled at. But these may help you, so these are kind of responding to questions I've received. First of all, all three of these candidates, and let's keep this in our mind, are proven, valued, professional administrators, period. Doesn't mean they're ready to be a superintendent, but they're all people who would be, who you want to work with in your school. I think that that much is, is quite clear. None of the candidates have all the qualifications yet to be an experienced superintendent. So if you have your checklist and you say, oh, they're missing some things, of course they are. They haven't been a superintendent yet. A candidate is only a viable choice if, in your opinion, first, they can make the difficult transition to becoming a superintendent, which is harder than any of them yet know. And secondly, if they can do that, you believe that they are a really good choice for the Minuteman school. See, if you think they could be a superintendent, but not a good choice for this school, then that would not be what I would consider a viable candidate. You do not have to explicitly reject a candidate. You can say, I think two candidates would be acceptable choices, meaning they can do those two things and give their names. But I have a preference for so-and-so. You can say that. And then give your reasoning. You can say, I believe strongly that the only acceptable candidate is so-and-so and give your reasoning. Keep in mind that if you have in your, your head a list of the skills that are missing, some skills may be easier to gain than others. For example, I don't think any of them have given a lot of financial presentations at member towns. Okay, that is a, a skill that they're going to have to learn. But that is, in my opinion, a much easier skill to learn than being to actually, being able to actually listen to your staff and the teachers. That's much harder to learn. So keep that in mind when you look at what you may consider to be deficiencies. If the school committee believes that none of the candidates are viable to be superintendent, then we are obliged to punt. Punt means we have to do it again. Now, that would be extremely unpleasant, but it would be our, our job. And I've seen situations, well, I'll go there. Having said that, I would give odds that we will not have to punt today. That's my impression by the body language of school committee members and my own reading. I do not think we're going to have to punt, but if, but if you have any candidate who meets, we cannot agree that there's at least one candidate that meets that criteria, then we are obliged to punt. Feel free to ignore all that stuff. Again, I'm just responding to concerns that I've been raised by people in this committee. So do you have any questions or comments about the go-arounds, which is going to be led by Acton?
Don't want to do reverse alphabetical order?
No, I don't like reverse alphabetical order today. I like the normal way we do it, these things. Any questions or comments or concerns you'd like to raise before we begin this or have I explained it well enough?
Thank you for the guidance. It's very helpful.
Thank you. Great. By the way, this, this does take some courage from the school committee members as well. I do want to acknowledge that. Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll try and consolidate my five pages of written notes that it will not take quite, quite as long. Some of the things I did just say that we had, were covered in the site visit. But I, I also want to, to thank our finalists, Heidi, Christina, Katie. Going through a public interview process is very difficult under the best of circumstances. And all of you were so engaging, forthcoming and exhibited a lot of grace throughout this process. And I really appreciate that. I also feel very fortunate that we have a Minuteman community that has been so engaged throughout this process. You know, Jeff started with thanking everyone who's been involved. That, that is so important. And I have really appreciated all of the information that we have from the videos, the comments, the references, the recommendations, you know, to really, you know, put forward and try and make this really important decision of who would be the best to be the next leader for Minuteman. I was hoping to be able to come in today with so much clarity to say, I have one front runner and here's who the person is. And, you know, I'm ready to go with that. But I, I have to say, I'm not there yet. I, and I'm really looking forward to the discussion to, you know, help make that decision. We have three candidates with very different strengths who could all have a positive impact on Minuteman. But that said, there are two candidates that I'm going to concentrate my comments on. Heidi Driscoll and Katie Whitaker. With that, I want to acknowledge that Christina Favreau is a very talented educator and leader. And any district would be very lucky to have her. But I do feel that for where Minuteman is right now, I believe that Heidi and Katie come closer to meeting the district needs and meeting the requirements outlined in the superintendent profile. So I'll just start with some of my thoughts on both candidates, on, you know, why I think they're both, both strong candidates. But, and here are some things that stand out for both of them. And I'll start with Katie. Katie is a real go-getter. You know, she, that's how she's been described throughout as someone who identifies needs. And she figures out how to make those, you know, how to meet those needs. She figures out how to make things happen. She's an innovator. She understands CTE education. I think I had the advantage of being on her site visit and hearing just how she has made such a positive impact. And, you know, and, and just hearing those stories about, you know, you know, finding, looking for those opportunities, finding those opportunities and making things happen. I talked about sort of two things that came up repeatedly already, the VetTEP tech program. And we did go to the, visit the clinic, by the way, which was a really wonderful experience. They have an open house coming up if anyone else would like to see that. And also the MVP program, which, you know, really helping to, you know, tackle a major problem and there not being enough CTE seats for students right now. You know, her brainchild and she's figuring out how to roll it out. Katie self-describes herself, other people describe herself as well, as having an outward facing role, which is a large part of the job of a superintendent. And she has significant experience working with businesses, chambers of commerce, other community groups. You know, at the same time, she has demonstrated that she understands the needs of the school. She'll focus on the needs of the school, the teachers and the students. And she will work diligently to meet those needs. Her communication skills are very strong. And she was, has been, was described to us and in her references as someone who can bring groups together. She has strong writing skills, strong presentation skills. One of the things that in the course of the interviews, the school committee members were asked what's important. And almost all of us said communication. And, you know, I do feel like she, she does have strong skills. Katie isn't coming with that, you know, with, you know, years as a classroom teacher. But I do want to, that said, during the site visits, we talked to a number of teachers who repeatedly talked about how she was able to help meet their needs and to take, you know, those extra steps to help them be able to do their work in the best way possible. And also therefore be supporting, you know, the students in the best way possible. The students talked about what a strong relationship they had with Katie. You know, they, they said she's fun, you know, no question, she is fun, but she's not only fun. You know, she supports them, she hears on them. And they said that they can count on her, which I think is something that's, that's really, really important. She understands their needs. As Jeff said, not everyone's going to have all of our experiences. Katie hasn't had the experience of overseeing and presenting on a district budget before, you know, town meeting. But she has had lots of experience in managing budgets for the projects for which she has received funding. And we did hear about how she is very diligent in tracking and being on top of those projects as they're being rolled out. So she's not just getting the funding and then saying, you know, someone else's job. That, that she, she does stay on top of that. And she was described as someone who has complete knowledge of the projects that she's responsible for and that she will work to make sure that every piece is being carried out. She was described to us, and again, I have the advantage of the site visit. So I'm, I'm going back to some of these comments as someone who stands her ground, but also who listens carefully and who will change her mind and adapt when needed. You know, we were told repeatedly, her judgment is impeccable, that she's someone who, she's very visionary. She'll have a vision and work hard to bring it to fruition. She is someone eager to learn, quick to adapt. And at the same time, she was described as someone who is very empathetic and, you know, does display empathy and has an understanding of, you know, wants to understand, you know, the students, the teachers, the faculty, the communities, the people that she's working with. So those are, are, I think, some of my impressions of Katie that, you know, lead me to think that, you know, I could see Katie as someone meeting those, you know, the, the pieces of the superintendent profile and, and leading Minuteman. I want to move on to Heidi. And now this is the, my debate I have been going through. You know, Heidi has clearly a long-term passion for education, a respect for teachers. She does hold a special education administrator's license, I believe, as well. She has, you know, she has experience with, you know, general education, CTE education and comes with a broad base of understanding of, you know, those three very critical pieces. And I think really understands, you know, that the importance of, you know, how they, how they all work together. She's very data-driven and understands not only how to collect it, but how to interpret it, how to use it, to be upfront with it, which makes for very transparent decision-making, which I think is something that's, that's very important. You know, she, again, is someone who's been described, when I look at the comments and the references as collaborative, a strong leader, she understands the needs of teachers. As someone who has a lot of experience working to improve systems and working to improve the systems that make us work and the systems that will benefit teachers and students. So one of the pieces of information Heidi produced for us was what she called her history of commitment that, you know, contains a lot of references from, you know, her bosses, her colleagues, the staff who report for her. You know, and, and former students who talk about the long-term impact that Heidi has made on. on, on these students. And, you know, throughout this document, and in fact, the first reference in it is some, it, it goes over all of the key elements of our superintendent profile and talking about how Heidi meets the elements of that superintendent profile. She shared with us a presentation that she made to her school committee that, you know, in watching it, not only was the presentation well-done, but the content really demonstrated her ability to tackle tough issues and tough challenges, you know, and bring people together, improve systems, which ultimately improve the teacher and student's experience. Heidi also created for us a document that was a self-reflection on the indicators for superintendent evaluations, just, you know, really showing her readiness to step into this position. Heidi has had involvement with an MSBA project, which, you know, I think is very important. She's also talked about involvement she's had in budget discussions and public communications on very difficult issues. One of them that she talked about was combining two elementary schools, you know, clearly a very challenging issue. I was also impressed with when she talked about in her interview, how she made sure that every child, every student had a co-op experience. And how she was knocking on doors, working with advisory committee members, working with alumni to make sure that every child would be able to have that co-op experience. I thought that that was incredibly impressive. Late breaking news that I think when Heidi, I think this just today, and it was an email from Ray, last minute email from Ray, that she was selected by Bridgewater State University, where she does teach as their alumni educator of the year. I talked about communication skills. Heidi also has very strong communication skills. I, I really appreciate what she, a style that she called, she said, you know, she wants to, you know, really fit her communication to her audience. She knows people are busy. She called it smart brevity. So I thought, oh, that was brilliant. I think she really does have a strong understanding of addressing the needs for all students. And ironically, today, this afternoon, I was on the phone with, at work with a colleague, talking about something completely different. The end of our conversation, she was just talking about another project she's working on. And she said it was in Situate. And she just went on to talk about how she was having this great experience and the person she was working with, you know, the assistant superintendent who was assigned to her. And, and this woman had no idea about my role at Minuteman. So this is just totally out of the blue. You know, and she started to give these glowing reports about this, this assistant superintendent that she works with and her commitment to equity, her critical thinking, her ability to set up her team for success, her strong organization, and her ability to be thinking ahead to make sure that this project is not just something that's going to work for a year or two, but will be successful for the long run. I finally said, what's the name of this person? And she said, oh, Heidi Driscoll. Why? So really ironic that that happened today. So again, both of these candidates, I feel like are coming in with what, to me, is just incredibly strong skills. I also think the feedback forms provided a lot of insights. And a few that stood out for me that I just wanted to highlight, both Katie and Heidi received lots of positive comments from both teachers and parents. Teachers described Katie as close to a perfect fit, great energy, genuine and thoughtful, a true love and devotion to vocational education. We would be lucky to have her. Parents talked about her passion for the trade, that her passion for the trades and technical schools really shines through. She's genuine. The Minuteman students who met her spoke highly of her in their comments, as did the Monty Tech students that we met. For Heidi, in the feedback forms, teachers described her as friendly and collaborative, genuine, having leadership experience dealing with district-wide issues, that she'd fit right in with Minuteman in terms of personality, ready to start this important role. One person said Heidi is the type of person I trust to listen carefully and thoughtfully to problems or concerns and address them in a way that's compassionate, respectful, and ultimately in the best interest of the Minuteman community. Parents said she's approachable and qualified, willing to collaborate, calm under pressure. So again, such positives on both. I talked about the superintendent profile. I do believe they both, they both meet the standards. They both have proven administrative leadership and personal skills. They both have been and will continue to be thought leaders in CTE education. Katie clearly has been active in MAVA and in lobbying her local legislators. Heidi also has a very good handle on key topics affecting CTE education that are before the legislator. When it comes to teaching, learning and curriculum, Heidi clearly has more hands-on experience, but Katie's references show that she does the work to understand and everything she can to support these fundamentals. They're both are strong communicators. Katie, given the nature of her job, has done a lot with external communication and bringing in partners for, for her school. But Katie has a strong track record and that, smart brevity. Ooh, I just loved that. I know that they both will put students first. They both lead through collaborative decision-making. Collaboration was a word that came up repeatedly in describing Katie. And in the site visit meetings, that's where we started to hear over and over again, I mean, for Heidi. Collaboration came up repeatedly in, if we're looking at the comments and describing Heidi. In the site visit, that's where we heard for Katie, collaboration came up often. I think they're both very capable of expanding the alumni network. Katie has numerous examples of building alliances in the community and bringing in alumni to be supporting the students. Heidi has those effective track record of lining up the co-op placements that I talked about. And a lot of that was through very effective outreach to the, an alumni community. And finally, our profile says the superintendent will promote Minuteman to our students, community leaders and businesses. And I trust both of them to be able to do that. So as I said at the beginning, I am truly torn between these two strong candidates. And I'm, at this point, for me, it's very important to hear the feedback from the other school committee members. I'm sure that there are things that I missed, I want to hear, because I know we're not in a position to hire both of them as superintendent of Minuteman and
Co-superintendents.
Co-superintendents. I don't think that's on the table, but
They'll share one salary, but they'll rate together.
Right. But, but that's where, at this exact point in time, that's where I'm at.
Thank you so
I took a long time.
No, thank, well, actually, you laid out a lot of groundwork that everybody else is going to be able to appoint to. Because I think you said a lot of things that were absolutely true. And a lot of that, we don't have to go over again if we don't want to. And I thank you for making this such a clear decision for us. I believe that Arlington is next.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam. I agree, you laid out a lot of groundwork, so I'm not going to repeat what you said. I'm going to look for, ooh, this is a nugget over here that I heard, and let's, let's look at that. So like Pam, I have two candidates that I think are ready for Minuteman. And nerd alert, because I did a whole scoring mechanism. And in addition to looking at the guidelines for the profile for their superintendent, knowing not everyone's going to hit every single mark, there were some things that I was looking at specifically too. Does this person have the capability of coalescing people? And then is this person strategic and visionary where there's a, there's a, this person's going to be working collaboratively to build a roadmap, right? Then I also looked at, you know, there are areas where they're going to learn and the school committee is going to support whomever is chosen with what they need support on to, to be successful. So I'm not worried about that. But what I was looking at and curious about was how coachable are these leaders? How coachable are they in terms of being self-aware and getting feedback on, here's an area, you know, let me talk to you about, about X, Y, Z. Here's an area where I, I'd like to give you some feedback on that. And I think both of them are very coachable. I would say right now, unlike Pam, I'm going to say Heidi is a little bit higher if I look at sort of the, the way my scoring came out. I'm not going to share the numbers with you because that was just my nerd alert scoring. But here's the thing that I, that I want to share that hasn't been shared yet. So the town of Situate has a strategic plan. Heidi was very much involved in the development of the strategic plan and broad constituents are involved as well. So there was a student that we met was part of that strategic plan, teachers, parents and the like. So there is sort of the vision piece that I find extremely interesting. We've already gone through the site visit. I want to just flag one quote. And thank you for everyone's input. It came to us as a spreadsheet, so we all added filters and moved things around and so forth. So this is coming from a teacher. It's anonymized. I don't know who it is. But this was, I thought, an interesting quote that's distinctive from what Pam had shared. She's, Heidi's an experienced upper administrator with knowledge and experience as assistant attendant. She's knowledgeable, thoughtful, personable, et cetera. A budgetary experience at a larger size than our district and has demonstrated an ability to successfully communicate with stakeholders. Okay. This is, here's the nuance I thought was so interesting. She's a former classroom teacher who did not rush into administration at the minimum three-year mark. I respect it. I'm confident that she can approach situations from a place of understanding about actual day-to-day impacts on decisions. So I thought that, Pam, that was just an interesting nuance, just a little bit different from, from what, from what you, what you shared. Both are extraordinarily passionate about what they do. They love their jobs. They, they are engaged with what we do here. They want to learn more. We wouldn't have ever expected either one of them to get, have the answers to all of the wonderful questions that were asked across the board. When I think about the evidence around specific programs, the driving of programs, again, this is where Heidi, Heidi, excuse me, came up a little bit higher was around that experience in consolidation of, of buildings and the redistricting and that outward-facing piece. On driving initiatives, Katie had, you know, very, very strong evidence of concept through execution and hitting all the steps along the way with the Vet program. And that's something obviously that resonates with those of us here at Minuteman, all of the stakeholders. Both of them, you know, both of them are not about change just for change's sake, but really what makes sense. And so I'll add something that, that, that Katie said was, you know, we're not just going to add a CTE program for the sake of adding, you know, we're going to look at all the variables that go into that decision-making. Both of them are highly analytic. Both of them know what data they have to look at to make decisions, how to segment both where the workforce is going, how work is going to be changing in the future and how to, how to get students ready. I'm trying, again, I'm trying to think about something that was distinctive from Pam. I'm, you know what, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to stop there because the, the reason why Heidi is a little bit higher in sort of my ranking now is around the vision and the strategic plan. There's no doubt she's a collaborator. There's no doubt she's going to build relationships. It will take some time. We're not going to turn around the relationship piece building in, in, you know, in two weeks. So I'm going to stop there just because I have stated a little bit about how one of my, one of the candidates is a little bit of a frontrunner in my mind right now. And then I want to get to the next person and when I will come back around.
And we will come back around. We will take a little break after this first round, but they're going to come back and do at least one more round, so. I'm sure you're all excited about that. Okay, thank you very much. Bolton. Erica.
Yes. Hi, thank you. My name is Erica Elsie and I'm the rep for Bolton. And I, I know it's been said before, but I really do want to thank everyone involved with this process. It was just so thorough, thorough, so informing, so insightful, and it really was just very helpful. You know, just as we're reviewing the candidates, the entire process, the question and answer with the parents, the feedback forms, the references, the help that we got from the Collins Center, and all the work that was done to select these finalists, all the work that was done to create the questions and interview all the candidates ahead of time by the, the search committee. So I'm very appreciative and thankful for that. So after reviewing all the information and thinking long and hard, I feel like Heidi Driscoll is this, the stronger candidate. She is approachable, enthusiastic, passionate and a visionary. I was particularly impressed with her communication, just very clear with all stakeholders. And she's also an excellent listener. She made sure to understand the question and to then, and to also ask clarifying questions, especially with the parents, just to really try to understand the question and to give the appropriate answer. I was very impressed with that. Some of these notes have already been said, so I'll try and skip over that. I think overall, you know, her role as assistant superintendent is closest to the role of a superintendent. She has just excellent experience of the different elements, including CTE, academic instruction and special education. She's got a comprehensive leadership skillset, which includes her special educator admin license, her experience as a principal and as assistant superintendent, as well as a classroom teacher and college professor. So I think that shows just her ability to adapt to different responsibilities and different job roles and different job environments. So she just has a very comprehensive, I would say, work experience and skillset. She also has experience in bringing academic rigor and high expectations and equity in learning. She has experience with presenting at school committee meetings, creating leadership teams, experience in recruiting and hiring principals. I was also impressed by the variety of the reference letters. They came from many different people that had worked with her, everyone from staff, administrators, previous students. So there was a, just a, a broad range of reference letters. And the reference letters did a good job of highlighting just a variety of skills. So I was very impressed with that and to kind of highlight different aspects of her leadership skills. She's, she's also very innovative. I was impressed with her partnership with the college, just the use of an app for communication, what Pam mentioned. You know, she's developed this system to, you know, be, give clear communication in, as briefly as possible. And also experience in creating systems and processes using data. So she has a very process kind of logical approach to finding solutions. I thought that her answers were very thoughtful and comprehensive. So that's about it for me.
Already, okay. Steve Ledoux, representative from Concord. And, you know, once again, I think the process was really awesome. You know, you know, as a former town manager, I've been through all kinds of interviews, including boards that ate dinner in front of me, which was extraordinarily awkward. So, you know, I think the way we comported ourselves and the way the rest of the Minuteman community did was just really exemplary and, you know, I think And, you know, I think it speaks, speaks well for us. I'm kind of like where Pam is. You know, I've, I, I did, I did Alice's handy-dandy little score sheet and I basically ended up with a dead heat and the dead heat is between Heidi Driscoll and Katie Whitaker. As somebody just said, geez, too bad we can't hire both of them. But I guess some of, some of my, my issues, and I, you know, I think, I think we all acknowledge that communication is a huge issue for the district. And I think both of them are great communicators. I do, I do like the collaborative approach of, of, of problem solving. You know, I, I think that, you know, nobody knows, not one person knows all the answers. I don't care if you have a PhD or, or whatever. And, and, and to be able to bring people together to collaborate and to solve problems is important. And I think both, both Katie and, and Heidi have, have demonstrated their ability to do that. I, I think one of the things that intrigued me about, about Katie is her ability to do fundraising. And I'm kind of putting on the chair of the FinComs hat right now because I think as we all know, with the budget we just, just approved, that it, there's a, there's a one-year kind of oddity where, you know, we, we aren't seeing the assessments going up very much. But in, in the future, they're going to go up big time and the ability to look for alternative funding sources, I think is going to be very important for the district. Secondly, with, with Katie, and I think it was mentioned before that, you know, she has kind of an outward presence with the community, but she has built a strong alumni relationship at, at Monty Tech. And, you know, that's important because one, you know, obviously I wanted to keep the relations with our alums, but also the ability to establish co-op projects and things like that for the kids. One thing about Katie that, to my recollection, and I could be wrong, in, in the interview with us, she was the only one that raised the lottery issue and concerned about the lottery issue. You know, in, in, in the, in the videos, and I can't remember was the videos with the faculty or the, or the Zoom. I think at least Heidi did talk about it, but with us, you know, it made me feel like she knows that's a real hot button for, for a district like ours, unlike Monty Tech, and, and she was pretty attuned to that. And, you know, she has the legislative contacts, which obviously with the lottery issue is, is going to be important as well. You know, with Heidi, I'm, I'm, I'm very impressed with her, 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 not only her leadership style, but her ability to communicate. Once again, she is a problem solver like other people, other people have said. And, you know, I think it's the fact that she is, you know, still out there kind of being in, being a faculty member at Bridgewater State. She's always teaching and I think, you know, I think that's a very important issue too. You know, I'm not so hung up with some of the, some of the things that some people have expressed concern to me, like the, the financial piece. Well, yeah, you know, finances are difficult, but we have got a great financial team here. And, you know, between Nikki and her team, myself as chair, you know, we can, we can always prep somebody for a town meeting presentation. That, that is.
That, that means you're staying on the finance committee chair forever, please.
My term's up in another year, Mr. Chair. Term limits in Concord, but that's okay. No, we'll talk later. But, you know, and, you know, there's the, there's the kind of coaching that, that the Superintendent's Association puts on too. So, you know, I, I think what we need is, is somebody, and we talked about it before, the face of the district. And, and both of them, in my mind, could be the face of the district. I wake up one morning, I'm one way. I wake up another morning, I'm the other way. You know, I, it's, it's, it's a tough, it's a good, you know, it's a good situation to be in, but it's a very tough decision. And I don't think whoever we, we choose, we're going to go wrong with it.
Thank you very much. Dover.
Hi, Maggie Sharon, Representative from Dover. First, I want to say thank you to all of the colleagues on the Minuteman School Committee. I came onto the school committee partway through this process and I really appreciate everyone's patience and also willingness and collegiality as I kind of got myself up to speed. As you may know, I did not attend Ms. Favreau's interview in person because of a previous commitment. And so tonight, I won't be casting a vote if we vote tonight. I'll be voting, you know, to abstain or just present, just because that's part of the guidelines that folks had, you know, before, before this process got going. But I was able to watch the interview. I also re-watched all the other interviews just to make sure everything was even in my head. I was able to review and watch the Zooms with the staff and parent and community members. And like, like Jeff, I read each comment that was put into the spreadsheet and was very deeply impressed with the commitment that everyone in this community had, the process and to being very thoughtful in how they reflected on the candidates and providing evidence for things that they had observed. It was very helpful and, and like you said, sometimes you have trepidation with feedback like that because, you know, it can, can be, you know, like a, you know, a gotcha or whatever. And, and I didn't read any of that and it was very heartening. I was also very appreciative of the rubric that Alice sent along. I had sort of started to do that myself, taking all, because I wasn't there when you created your superintendent, you know, description, job description. And while I've been through a superintendent hiring process a couple of times in my role on another school committee, I was familiar with the process and that was a really important bible for me in terms of thinking back to what is Minuteman looking for in the next leader. I feel like we were able to meet in this process three very talented professional, professionals, each of whom is ready to move to a next step in their career. And so for me, the question was really around which one of these folks would be the best fit for this school at this time. And as he, as others have mentioned, each candidate brought strengths to the table. And I actually think all three of them could find a home in leadership at Minuteman in different sort of venues. I really wished that we had had three jobs available and could welcome them all. But based on all that I read and observed, I would support either Heidi Driscoll or Katie Whitaker to move forward in the process as the next superintendent. That said, I believe that the candidate who best fits the Minuteman's needs at this time is Katie Whitaker. My thinking around this was based on specifically her experience in the outward-facing role at Monty Tech and the big picture understanding of what it is to have Chapter 74 CTE school in Massachusetts, what the specific needs are, particularly to partnering with outside folks, business partners, our sending communities and gathering potential support from the public and the state houses, I think has been mentioned tonight. I felt like looking at the resumes while both of the candidates that I could support had experience in CTE education. I feel like the, the unique aspect of Katie's experience is really something that Minuteman needs right now at this juncture. Not just in terms of finances, but just in terms of, you know, needing to have broad-based community support. Whether or not a lottery comes, however it works, getting those folks on board seems to me to be a really important priority right now. I think that also her long tenure at Monty Tech got my attention. I think that we've spoken a lot about the upper leadership positions that all three of the candidates had, but her kind of depth of experience, 16, I think it was 16 years she's been in, mostly in that role. And, and from my experience working in public schools in Massachusetts, it is very rare to have someone stay in such an outward-facing and public role for such a long time. Because, you know, the, the guild comes off the lily and, you know, people don't like all your ideas and it's really difficult. And she's had a lot of time and to sit in that experience and, and, and has been able to lean into it. I thought that she had of the three candidates, most innovative ideas and ways to grow the school, both in terms of programming, specific to CTE primarily, but she had an understanding of the academic side. She also had a really strong understanding of the role of school culture and student culture and how important that is to getting a school to move from good to great. And, um, I forgot that. I think that both candidates, both Katie and Heidi showed themselves to be quick learners and team players. And I also felt from both of them and read different aspects in the various feedback forums and specifically in the reference letters that talked about them, both having the characteristic of being able to put forth an idea, a well-researched idea, something grounded in, in, you know, good practice and also being able to listen to feedback and change their mind or, you know, change their, their initiatives when evidence and, and folks needed them to move in a different direction. I left the process, particularly the analyzing of the rubric, understanding that no one candidate is going to have the whole package. I think Heidi had some specific strengths in curriculum and on the academic side, and in particular to special ed, that are really fabulous. I just feel that looking at the other folks in the staff and the leadership staff here, that it's Katie who has the missing pieces. And I believe that she is ready to step up in her career. I do feel like she would, as a new superintendent, need to participate. I would want her to participate in the new superintendent induction programs and be placed with a mentor who could specifically support her understanding the budget process and strategy and also the challenges, requirements and best practices for academic and special, you know, both the interplay between academics and, and special education. That said, I, I could support either candidate, but I found the most evidence and enthusiasm in supporting Katie.
Thank you, Maggie, and once again, welcome to the school committee. Happy to have you. Lancaster.
Good evening, everyone. Charlene Cabral from Lancaster. While Steve mentioned that we are looking for whether or not the candidates are ready to accept a superintendent position and secondly, whether it, they would be a good fit for Minuteman. I have no doubt that all three of these individuals will eventually be superintendent somewhere. But as far as the right fit for Minuteman, I too am torn, so to speak, between Heidi Driscoll and Katie Whitaker. The fact that they are in some ways so alike and in some ways so complimentary is really unnerving, I guess. Because you, like Steve said, you wake up one day and you're a little more here and the next day you're a little more there. I've had the benefit of being on the subcommittee. So I saw both of these candidates, all three of these candidates in their first round of the interview. I had the benefit of touring the school and seeing their interactions with teachers and their interactions with students. I had the benefit of watching them go on an external tour of the school and seeing their reactions to the buildings that we've had. Had the benefit of going to one of the site visits and looking at all of this material. I'm going to try to think of the things that have not been said here today. A couple of these things came up from the first round of the interview process. So Heidi Driscoll had spoken about, well, one of the quotes from Heidi Whitaker that I really loved.
Heidi Whitaker?
Heidi, so that was, see, that would have been perfect. We could get them both together. Sorry, Freudian slip. Heidi Driscoll, one of the quotes of hers that I really appreciated was that, you know, you have to be aware of the invisible discrimination of low expectations. You always want our students to be able to, to have the mindset of what they can do. And I was really inspired listening to her speak about that, knowing that she would want to instill that in each student, that, you know, it's not about what they can't do. It's all about what they can do. And that was one quote that many of you didn't have the benefit of, that I wanted to share. Another aspect about Heidi that came through in the first round, which I don't believe came through in the second round, was the fact that she had to do some budget work. And she created this whole packet where they drilled down each piece of the budget so that if there were any questions, they could go directly into this like booklet that they created and know what the budget item was, what its necessity and like the background of each budget item. And I was impressed by that because to me it said that she is ready to discuss budgets on a town level or, you know, that, that sort of thing. So I also want to state that when both Heidi Driscoll and Katie Whitaker walked through these halls, they both knew CTE. They were both very comfortable speaking with the instructors, instructors of the shops, the different departments. They were both very comfortable with the vernacular of the different shops. So it was clear to me that they both had experience. I know some people perhaps didn't look at Ms. Driscoll's background, previous background, but she had a very longstanding previous background at Evoch Tech School Southeastern. I think there were some comments that the people weren't sure if she had enough technical experience. She does. But now, moving over to Ms. Katie Whitaker, the one thing that truly impressed me when she was going through our school was that she had ideas that she shared freely with our staff. She spoke to the welding instructor about pre-apprenticeships and the funding that was available to the department if students were considered pre-apprentices. That they, they would get X amount of dollars for each student that could do this program. And, you know, I saw the welding instructor just light up like, wow, that's great, you know? We've got to look into that. And she said, don't worry, I'm going to email you. I'm going to go on the website tonight and look you up and, and email you. She also spoke to the business manager and said, when you're ready to do something with this building, contact this person, contact that person. If you want to move that tech here, then contact this clinic because they're expanding and this is probably something they'd be really interested in. So while I will say that Heidi Driscoll also had some thoughts and said, you know, my mind is already working on what can happen here, Katie let them out, you know? Katie spoke of some of the ideas and I thought that was very, very honest and, like, she didn't have to do that. She's interviewing for this job. She didn't have to give anybody some, like, pointers of, of her point of view. She could have reserved that and waited until maybe she got the job and then shared. But she was willing to share and I, to me, it showed her dedication to education because, you know, she's also doing that MVP program where it's not a direct benefit to Monty. Some would say it's even competition, right? You're helping students because Monty has a 500-person waitlist. You're helping students that are not going to be able to get to Monty, get some technical training. So I felt that that was just a really great quality. So I pride myself on being very decisive and it's really aggravating me that I'm having such a hard time. I think if these two individuals were in front of us, they probably know each other. But if they were, you know, they would probably understand the difficulty we are having because they're both excellent. Ms. Favreau is, as well, but I just feel that she's, if this were a comprehensive school, I think we'd be talking three ways. But given the tech experience, experience that I believe that the superintendent needs to have, this is a tie right now for me between Katie Whitaker and Heidi Driscoll.
Thank you, Charlene. That helped me, you know, just like, that just. That helped me, you know, just like that, uh, just totally cleared up the picture a hundred percent. I, I, I kind of expected this. Thank you very much for real.
Okay, so that brings up Lexington. Here we go.
The other L.
This is a very difficult decision, as everybody has said. I feel like, I mean, I've watched the, um, the videos with the parents and the faculty multiple times. I spent a lot of time watching videos on my computer. I went through like all the faculty visits with all of the candidates. Then I went through all the parents with all the candidates. Then I was like, now I'm really more confused. So then I went back and I did all of Katie's videos and all of Heidi's videos and all of Christina's videos. I have, I came into tonight feeling very torn between two candidates. I don't know specifically why, but I'm going to try to articulate it, but I think I've now, I think I'm now coming out with one, um, and that would be Katie. I feel very strongly that both Katie and Heidi are incredibly talented, would be amazing fits, um, for here at Minuteman. I think when I'm thinking about what I see as a real critical areas of need for Minuteman, I think about, um, a couple of things. One being the legislation in front of us, especially with the lottery and the potential of the lottery. I think about, um, let's be honest, staff relationships. I think about faculty needing to feel respected and heard. And while I feel like that would happen with both candidates, I felt like there was this joy almost in watching the video with, with Katie with the faculty. I felt like when I read through, um, the surveys or the feedback, there was comments about empathy, about her being real, about how genuine she is, about the, the, the culture. One of the quotes that stood out for me was, um, well, there was a couple of things. One faculty member felt that there was a real hope that they felt in leaving her, um, her session with them. Another one felt like she was the right person to help us heal and move forward. It was also stated that she would have the respect of the faculty and although I don't feel like that's, you know, the end all be all, like we, a, a faculty that feels respected is more happy about coming to work and I'm putting on my own, um, teacher hat as I say that. Um, and I think that that ultimately leads to positive outcomes for our students. Um, and I also felt like they were very positive with Heidi as well, and I do think that Heidi is incredibly talented. I think what sort of tipped my scales was when I was thinking about, um, some of the CTE. And so just to explain the MVP program a little bit more, because that is also one of the things that sort of tipped my scale. It's a partnership between Monty Tech, Pittsburgh Public Schools, Gardner Public Schools and Narragansett Regional School District. So juniors and seniors in those schools will have the ability to do some trade, um, instruction. And so it takes off about, I think, I think the numbers is like, I think it's about 120 kids that basically come off the waiting list of not being able to get into vocational education, uh, being, getting into Monty because of the programs that will be available. And she had mentioned, um, when she was telling us a little bit more about that at lunch and she said, um, you know, everybody says more seats, more seats, she goes, but I'm thinking of these communities that if you give us more seats from some of these communities, you've decimated their education budget for their public school. So it's like, she's not just thinking about what's best for Monty and what's best for the students, but also what are the effects that that has budget wise on the communities? So I felt like the, um, I think the reason that it sort of tipped my skills was when I think about, everybody talked about her being a go-getter and she has three people that directly report to her, yet we saw, you know, a dozen or more people that all talked about the positive impact that she has on them. So I think, um, her, so for me, it's Katie's outside contacts are invaluable. Her innovation of thinking like, oh, we've got this space, what are we going to do with it? Well, how are we going to help Minuteman grow with that? I'm sure she probably already has, um, you know, 15 ideas written down about the different spaces here. Um, but I think that her contacts externally, her experience with the, um, current legislation and her, her rapport that she really seemed to gather with the faculty in that short amount of time, and then the comments from the faculty about hope, respect, healing, you know, she said that she had been through a really rough, um, change in leadership back at Monty and she, I know one of her comments, she said to the faculty in her, um, video, like I said, I've watched them multiple times, um, was, I've been there, I get it. And I think that ability to relate is really important for our faculty, which trickles down to being really important to our students. So that, it might switch again as the night goes on because I came in dead even and I'm now leaning towards Katie, but that's where I land right now.
The night is young. Okay, who's the, oh, the Needham guy? That's me. So I am Jeff Stuland from Needham, the representative from Needham. And, uh, to be honest, when we were, uh, choosing three finalists, none of whom had superintendent experience, I originally was, was dreading that because I know how hard that transition is from non-supintendent to superintendent. Uh, but I'm not dreading it now. Because to my surprise, I have, and this is nev-, this is my fourth time going through this process at Minuteman. And never before had two people who I could vote for. Same two people that we've been talking about would be Heidi and Katie. I would vote for either, I do have a preference, but I would vote for either of these people uh, to be superintendent at this school. Unfortunately, we can't just add these candidates to test tubes and then put in reagents to do scientific based experiments as to who's going to be the best superintendent. It is, it is a messy process with, um, limited information and unbelievable complexity of all the parts meshing together when somebody coming here. They're, they're having to learn to be a superintendent and run the school at the same time and deal with ever disasters come along. I, um, um, wise enough to understand that I do not have perfect vision to determine a hundred percent which of these candidates would be better for us. And I'm thinking five years out. I'm not thinking, you know, you have to think about today, but I'm thinking five or 10 years out because that's kind of the, the timeframe that I usually look at. So I'm going to explain why I am, I'm leaning to Heidi. But be, be very clear that if when we finally go to a vote and it's clear that the school committee is leaning in another direction, I, I will switch my vote to try to make it unanimous at that time. I would have no trouble doing that. So when you look on paper, at first glance, uh, I, I, I initially was more supportive of Katie because her outward facing is closer to what a superintendent would do, right? But Heidi got a lot of that experience being the assistant superintendent and the particular situation they were in because they had a situation, uh, there at her school as well in which most of the staff left. And you had a brand new superintendent and she became his right arm and he gives her credit for helping to make his entry into that superintendency, um, successful. I think that's a fair representation of what he said. Would you agree? Say yes.
I would agree, Jeff, and thanks for bringing that up.
Right. I, so, um, she has had, um, a lot more experience at positions within the school. English Language Arts, high school teacher, um, high school English teacher, ELA, uh, curriculum supervisor, she was a principal, um, at Southeastern. So one of the comments, I think it was brought up, was that, uh, one of the knocks against her was that she didn't have any career tech experience. Well, she went to a career tech high school and I believe that she was at, um, Southeast for like 14 years or something like that. So she had a whole, uh, she had her high school experience, career tech, then she went to these other places and the, a variety of positions, Southeast for 14 years, and then she moved over to Situate where for two and a half years, she was the assistant superintendent. So all these comments we get and a lot of these recommendations are from the intense amount of work that she did in her few years at, um, at Southeastern. Uh, she was also an instructor at, uh, Bridgewater and, uh, UMass Boston and at Pittsburgh State, which tells me a little bit about perhaps she has a, a bigger view of, of the universe than would necessarily be typical of your, um, assistant superintendent. I'm not going to review again the things that she has accomplished. When you get as many recommendations as, as she gave, and it was, is quite a long list, a variety of people, it always makes you a little bit skeptical. But my skepticism was changed during the site visit because I could say, yes, these main points that she is saying are, um, reinforced again and again and again and again and again. She had a, um, a few examples in which she demonstrated what I call, uh, quiet leadership. I'll give you, uh, a couple of specifics. When I asked my question, and by the way, they both gave, both Katie and Heidi gave a good answer to this. I asked the question of, when you get to be the hot seat of the superintendent and everybody's taking pot shots at you, how are you going to deal with that? Because you don't deal with that in your position. None of them know how tough that's going to be, by the way. But I got good answers from both candidates. They both pushed back. Now just think about that. Here you are for this, edit interview after this long day for this very, you know, desirable position and the chair of the school committee, one of your bosses is giving you this question and they push back. So Katie said, uh, she said a few things, she queried me about what I was getting at. And then she says, are you asking if I have a thick skin? And I said, yes. And she said, you know, yes, which was great. And Heidi gave an equally good answer, but she said, um, uh, I may appear to be demure, but I have a very thick skin. So a very kind of quiet answer to that. And this kind of quiet leadership, which is a little harder to discern, was mentioned, not in those words, those are my words, throughout all of her, uh, people during the site visit. And we saw an example of it during, I think it was the, uh, parent video when there was a problem with the, um, uh, technology, which, which there's never any problem with technology, is there? No, never. But what happened was it was a problem with technology, I think it was during, and she without skipping a beat, took over the situation without taking over the situation and was able to proceed forward. And people would not have noticed that. And that is a, um, uh, and Katie has plenty of leadership, but it's, it's, you know, more typical what you expect to see. This is fairly unusual, this kind of quiet leadership, which is harder to notice. And so now I think about all the, uh, the constituents, all the various groups, friendly and unfriendly, internal and external, that she has to deal with. I think that for some of these characters, that can be very challenging. I think I like the quiet leadership approach. Now that doesn't mean she can't be tough. She made that very clear and there was plenty of evidence of it. And her quiet leadership was what allowed her to get like the, the people in the school from the person in transportation to, you know, like the AP English teacher to agree to a, um, a system of evaluation, which is always something that is very tough to get through a school because most of them are awful. So even though it may not be quite as visible, that impressed me enormously. I noticed it. Some people said she lacks energy. No, the energy is all there. It's just that it is kind of not quite as visible, but there's a lot of energy in what, in what she accomplishes. She also made a comment on UDL. So UDL is another teacher thing. It's called the Universal Design for Learning and it's a controversial thing because, and what it basically means is you're able to create a curriculum that allows everybody, you know, to come in. And it's something that has, um, been abused and implemented terribly. It's one of those things that administrators at an upper level can check, so we got that again, UDL, it helps. But the implementation of it can be very harmful for teachers. So when UDL come up, she said, I am in favor of a modern interpretation of UDL. And she gave a list of what was the difference between how we used to do it, which required you to make like three or four different lesson plans, to how she thinks it, it should work. So as normally I, you know, avoid it like the, the plague as I saw it evolving, I'd say, okay, this is something that maybe I could listen to. Um, I'm going to refer again to the comment, I never feel abandoned by the director of the, um, DEI. She knows, uh, sped very well. And I thought that Katie's answers and the sped questions were a lot weaker. She would have to rely more on her staff, which is not a terrible thing. That'd be something that she would have to learn, which she could be, she's wicked smart. But it is a strength that, um, Heidi brings right away. Another thing I like to do is choose some random element on their resume, you know, something buried in there because, you know, they can write, you can write everything you want and maybe you contribute 1% or they, you know, put that in there. So I took something obscure that I understand very well, which is AP Computer Science. She said she introduced it. So I, of course, asked that question during our interviews, one of the questions I asked. And she gave a very long description of how she had contributed to bring it to the school and all the challenges, which are different than the challenges that we might have here. And how she overcame them and by getting different people to change their mind about how to do things. So not only did she demonstrate that, yes, something in her resume really was that she contributed to, but she came out with another example of being able to get through quiet leadership, being able to get people who disagreed with her or disagree with it initially to work together to make something work. She helped to implement reading evaluation for the upper grades at Situate. So reading, of course, is something that you better be able to do real well in high school and, uh, I may, as a sarcastic comment, because we don't give that enough attention. You know, what's the number one indicator of being successful on the, uh, the MCAS exam is your, your reading. So she helped them, I don't know if she initiated, I don't remember she, they said she initiated, but she certainly helped develop a, uh, not a testing program, an evaluation program of student learning of reading in the upper grades, which they didn't have before. And that, you know, and then she, I'm not going to, not going to go into her claim that they went from 19% to 15% proficiency during the race to the top because I don't know exactly what happened there, but perhaps this was part of it. Okay, just a, almost a comical, uh, a follow-up to Steve's finance question. So recently we had our, um, interim superintendent along with the, um, um, business finance people in the school came up with a, a way to take that, uh, 600,000 or whatever the towns wanted back, right? So they wanted it back for, uh, a reasonable reason. But instead, what the assistant superintendent did was, interim superintendent did, he came up with a scheme which instead of just giving it back to them, we're paying off part of a loan. Not a scheme, an idea. But even for superintendents, for example, with good financial experience, not a lot of them, I think. But even for superintendents, for example, with good financial experience, not a lot of them, I think. Do you think that a lot of them would come up with that idea? Yeah, right. So our current interim superintendent is above most superintendents and that, so there's a long range here. That's one of the reasons I'm not that worried about the fact, you know, theoretically a numbers person has been on the F income many, many years during my tenure here, but I'm, I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about these other things. So I'm just reemphasizing Steve's position there. I think they both actually talked strongly about the lottery in one or two places. I was surprised that they did. So theoretically, I should like the person with the outward view more than the inward view. But for all these reasons, I'd be leaning towards Heidi. And I also really liked the statement, the invisible discrimination of low expectations. Because a lot of solutions to equity, the so-called solutions to equity mean let's have lower expectations so they're going to have higher grades. And that is a tragedy. We don't have lower expectations and yet that's sometimes the easiest way to make things look better. So the fact that she's focused on that issue did catch my attention. So I could, I, I, I'm not doing the same thing for Katie. I have a long list of things for Katie. You mentioned all of them at one point or another. And I believe everything that you said about Katie is true. There's nothing that struck me wrong. But these are kind of the things, and a lot of the things they have are in common. So I'm not going to, you know, talk about that again. So these are the things I think are very special about Heidi and why I'm leaning towards her. But as I said, I'm in the, the only time in my four long painful superintendent searches that I had, two candidates I would happy to vote for. And that's it. Thank you.
I'm not on mute. I want to, I am Alice Suleka from Stowe. And just in case anybody's wondering, the rubric that people were talking about is just the superintendent profile, which has all of the lines of the superintendent profile and three columns. So it's not anything special. It's actually the same exact thing that we all read a hundred times. But for my own personal entertainment, I had to go through and look to see. I believe that one of the candidates referred to that as transactional, but I found it transformational. So and I also did the same dopey thing with the comments. And I went through and I sorted them thousand ways, colored the yeses green and looked at all that. So I did all those things. I read all, everything. I put little clips on here to make sure I wouldn't lose stuff. And then, of course, I forgot my printed copy of my remarks. So I have them on my iPad, thank goodness. I also wanted to thank the alumnus who's at the back, I see him. And also the students that have sat through all of these with us because they're doing a great job. And also Julia, because she's sitting through this with us and she puts this all together and does all this stuff every single time. It's amazing. So I just, I just wanted to say that. So when I think about hiring a new superintendent, I think about the profile, which, you know, is in mind and it formed the basis of my mental evaluation of these people. I liked all three of these people. They're very nice people. They're very competent people. I also considered how the conversations that the candidates had affected the energy in the room. How they might present material to a town meeting, how they might present to leaders at local institutions of higher education, business and industry, because they're going to have to do that. Who can partner with us and hire our graduates and how they would make tough decisions. They call for quick responses without the time to gather stakeholders, reflect on solutions, et cetera. They often have to make decisions that are kind of quick. And lastly, I considered how they might take on the planning process for advancing a school that already has a brand new building and is very successful. This school has a brand new building. We have a great school that's very successful. I am a parent of an alumnus who says he would come back and go here again. He is very happy. He went here, he's toured the school with his wife and they were, they were just bowled over by this school. So I'm looking for someone who will focus on the present and the future. As Minuteman has always done, we've always, that's always the way this school has been from the beginning. I want Minuteman to be Minuteman. We saw at our meeting earlier this week that Desi is ramping up the revision cycle on the chapter seventy-four frameworks to respond to the speed of technological advances. They are saying that, you know, it's taken 10 years to redo the frameworks and that's too slow because the technology is advancing much quicker. Minuteman also will have to adjust to that speed. And that will require new partnerships, more frequent equipment changes and much professional development. And all of us are going to have to change everything and learn everything new all over again. If you just look at the developments in AI over the past year, you can see it just spreading like a wildfire. I'm not saying whether I think that's good or bad. We used to talk about how we don't know what the careers of the future will be. And we were thinking about decadal changes. People always made fun of education. Oh, it's a pendulum, it swings every 10 years, right? Swings this way. But right now, the future is right around the corner every year. And who is going to lead Minuteman through that? That's kind of what I'm thinking. Who's going to get Minuteman through that? Because tomorrow is coming right up. So I really liked all of them. I'm grateful to all of them for coming in. They all have great strengths. I also was torn a lot about these characters and their ability to do this job. You don't actually know what will happen once a new superintendent is in place. Sometimes you think it's going to go one way and it goes another way. It's always really interesting and also the things that happen societally and in education change, change things overnight sometimes. Like Jeff, I leaned towards Heidi Driscoll and I'm going to speak about Katie Whitaker first because I also liked her very much. And I can see hiring either one of those two women. Katie has 15 years of administrative experience in vocational high school education at Monty Tech. She is personable and approachable and she interacted in an engaged way with both the staff and the students on the tour. She is cognizant of the different roles of the principal and the superintendent. She described a high success rate with grants and had some interesting thoughts and pointers about the potential for the pre-apprenticeship program, which I'm sure she would investigate more thoroughly. In her development role, she has significant experience interacting with local and state politicians and leaders. She understands the importance of taking political action when necessary to advocate for vocational education, which Minuteman has had to do a lot of over the years. We have been involved a lot. And it's, it's really tedious work. She has experience with the complicated process of adding chapter seventy-four programs, what to plan for, what the problems are. She outlined very carefully that once you add another program, if you have 20 programs and you add a 21st program, there is a perception that you're going to be taking away from the other programs that already exist. So there's some resistance. The actual schedule for doing something like that and what the difficulties are. So she, she talked about all those things and I liked that. I just want to talk, I think, a little more about Heidi Driscoll. She has a well-rounded knowledge of CTE. She has professional but approachable manner and a very pleasant energy. She talked about being a servant leader. She has a good sense of humor, but not at the expense of others. And I really want to emphasize that. I really, really like that she did not have a sense of humor at the expense of anyone else. I felt she would bond with groups without divisiveness. And by that, I mean, I think she would bond with all of the groups, but not one against another. She would present well to boards, town meetings and businesses. She has an unusually strong understanding of how to use data to identify and solve problems. And that is very difficult to do well. I've seen it done badly. To really, to really get to the bottom of what the data is telling you is complex. And she talked to us about how she had looked at our data. She saw what it said, but she didn't know what it meant yet. And that is exactly right. You can't tell by reading the Desi website, anything about Minuteman. But she uses it to solve problems. She has been a classroom teacher, a principal and administrator at a vocational high school for 13 years. That is a lot of experience in a vocational high school. She has been teaching educators at Bridgewater State for 13 years and is a visiting lecturer at Pittsburgh State since 2017. A licensed special education administrator understands and highlighted that there can be invisible barriers of low expectations as two other people have mentioned for students. And it is a real problem in schools. And it is a real reason why a lot of kids come to Minuteman. Because of those barriers of expectations, low expectations that they experienced in their home school districts. You know, their home school districts would find probably fewer kids coming to Minuteman if they would just like, listen to that phrase, you know, and go, wait a minute. Maybe we should have higher expectations for our students. Anyway, she is thoughtful in her presentations. And I, by the way, the invisible barrier of low expectations, I actually felt that what she was really talking about was the potential impact of implicit bias, which people like to talk about, but don't understand. The, the impact of implicit bias on expectations and therefore on student experiences. She is thoughtful. She's thoughtful in her presentations, which we saw in a video over on school committee. Her skill in presenting information and responding without upsetting anyone indicate that she would handle the outward facing part of a crisis management situation well. She can speak off the cuff. She even went through the exercise of evaluating her experiences against the superintendent evaluation rubric to see herself if she had the necessary skills for this job. And she gave it to us. You know, that's really remarkable. The organizational skills and patience of that individual are extraordinary. I was really impressed because she didn't bat an eyelash. And I just want to emphasize what Jeff said, that in the Zoom interview with the parents, she was the first candidate. It was the first time it had been through. And what she said, it was quiet. They were supposed to, you know, raise their hand on the video. People weren't comfortable. She said, just put it in the chat. And instantly everyone was comfortable, things just moved along. She made people comfortable enough to start the conversation. And she wasn't phased at all when she had to move to another location and talk. She didn't blame somebody, talk about technology not working or anything like that. She just did it. And to me, that shows really seasoned professional experience. And I, I just, I couldn't think of anything negative to say about Heidi Driscoll. So I'm just going to say positive things. I liked her and I would vote for her. I would, you know, also that was, had a long week thinking back and forth. So I liked them all. And I, and I thank Ms. Pevro for applying too, because she has very good quality.
Is that it? Alice, I want to finish with Alice first. Sure.
One thing I just wanted to mention, I know we've talked a lot about the feedback that was given to us. And I learned today, a parent asked me what I thought about her comment. And I said, what are you talking about? I don't know what your comment was. And I was informed that the people who gave comments had to put their name in their email. So they thought that the comments were actually coming with their name attached. So that even gives me even a greater level of respect of what's, I, I know it's interesting, but the fact that they shared as much as they did, it was not a, like, we didn't know who gave it.
When I looked at that form, I went and looked at the form. It had a star next to the candidate, but everything else was not a required field.
Well, okay, I didn't see it, but I just think it was interesting because I think a lot of people may have put their name in. I'm, I'm just saying that I think it's really great that people felt that their names were attached to it in many, in some cases, and gave such quality of feedback. I guess I just wanted to note.
Courageous feedback.
Courageous, there we go.
So we have finished the first round. Now, what we're going to do with, with permission of the school committee, I'm going to call for a seven or eight minute recess. Because I need to walk around and clear my head for a few minutes. I do want to also make a comment about Julia's participation in this. Because I have sent her on the last week, a lot of requests to give all of you information and to have this event run smoothly. And only half jokingly, I said today when I gave her three requests in a row, is just the beginning. The deluge is coming. So she has been instrumental in guiding a very complicated communication process. Often we have to funnel things through her and she funnels it out, which is also a very complicated thing. So I just wanted to mention that as well, since she was brought up. So a seven minute recess, would that be okay before we get back together, folks?
Wonderful. And I would also at some point like the school committee to think about something we can do to take care of this woman who has taken care of us through this wonderful process. So, and then, yeah.
Okay, see you back here. School committee members. We are going to do another go around. Now, this one will not take as long. Because you don't have to state the entire T, because we've all heard it. But now you've heard the primary comments from all of your peers. So this time around, any additional, you should state any additional comments you'd like to add and the person you're leaning to. And if I can, if I, if I believe it's time after that second go around, then we will move to a vote. Else we'll take another little recess and have another go. I think that's how we're going to do it. And with a dreaded look on her face, do I have to go first again? Cam from Acton.
I'm making faces at Jeff. Okay, well, I came in here, you know, with my columns added up evenly, just a tie. And, you know, if you're going to put a gun to my head and say, pick a candidate. But I honestly, you know, I do feel like these are such strong candidates. I mean, we know that, we've been hearing that. When, when Alice just said, who do you see leading us in the next five years? Or the, leading the Minuteman of the future? The face that jumped into my mind first was Katie's. And it's not because I don't feel like Heidi could do it or not because I wouldn't be a hundred percent behind her. But, you know, it was Katie because of, you know, all the things we've been talking about. In addition, you know, really thinking about a couple of things that both Steve and Sharon brought up in terms of thinking about the financial pressures on our town and how those are only going to be growing. And Katie has really shown an ability to be incredibly sensitive and to help with that. So again, I would say, you know, like that evenness is there, but when the name that jumped into my head was Katie.
Thank you very much. Arlington.
I want to just acknowledge a little bit of a nuance around how wonderful I think this process has been. Because I think in tonight's discussion, we've been very thoughtful in being additive to things that we're hearing from our colleagues on school committee. And, and I really, I really appreciate that. I, I came in, you know, and said I had two, two candidates and Heidi was a little bit higher. And I still believe that. So Heidi to a school and I don't feel I need to give any more narrative at this point.
Bolton. Erica.
Yes, so it is difficult. You know, once you hear everyone's perspective. But I, I am also still leaning towards Heidi. I think primarily, you know, looking at the short term and the long term. I think she would have the less of a learning curve and then have a vision for the long term as well. So, and I was also thinking, I believe she was involved in the recruiting and hiring of five different principals. So that came to my mind also.
Thank you very much. Concord. Steve.
You know, it's funny, back in the day when I was interviewing, I always felt it was either best to be the first to be interviewed or the last. Because if you were the first and you Because if you were the first and you killed it, you set the bar. Or if you were the last and you did well, that's what they remembered you because you were the last. And I unfortunately can't apply either one on this one. This is tough. I think, all being said, you know, I am, I am concerned about the communication part, the face, the face of the district, and slightly leaning towards Katie Whitaker.
Thank you very much. Dover.
I really appreciated listening to everyone's observations, people's insights from places where I wasn't there, particularly Charlene's sort of observations of the various candidates sort of in, in the line. And I still could vote for either and support either candidate. I, I, nobody has brought, I don't know if it's come up, or I maybe missed it, that we did receive a letter from the faculty that, that, you know, said that the faculty was supporting both Heidi and Katie and that they felt mostly supportive of Katie. And I understand that that's in, in the context of all the other information and where that sits. But it was mentioned more than one time in the commentary that when they sat with and spoke with Katie, that they left a meeting, or a particular person left the meeting with hope. And I just feel like schools in general have been a hard place to be in the last five years. And I understand, although I didn't experience the challenges that I have gone through this school in the last two years. And I, I think it's impangible, but to be able to inspire hope and excitement is a big deal to me. And so while I would support either candidate, and I think they're both fabulous, and I got more points for both, I would still support Katie over Heidi marginally.
The good news is that it's a win-win either way because whoever we're going to pick today is going to be fantastic. But after hearing my colleagues here and reconsidering my notes, I am slightly leaning toward Heidi.
Any further comments, or is that it?
That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Lexington.
Okay, so I have wavered a little bit back and forth, but I, the other thing that was brought to mind as I was reading, looking through my things, was that, you know, we do have numerous letters of recommendation and references for Heidi. But I think the other one, the other point that I am reminded of is the unsolicited letter of recommendation that we received for Katie, which was from an employee of Monty Tech, who basically said, you know, I could go on and on, but I just want to express, take the time to express how impressed I am with her and that I consider her a role model and a constant reminder of why we are all here. I have no stake in her application. I'm just a trade teacher, nobody important. But I hope that this letter has some meaning to her application. And I just think, again, that the, the effect on staff and staff feeling supported and her innovative thoughts about just, oh, there's a building, what am I going to do with it? I mean, she made a point of getting that, the, that tech program there so that it did not have to go back to the towns to have to give more money. She got all the funding for it. And I think she's very aware of the impact on towns. And I am staying with Katie being my number-one choice. I would be happy with Heidi, but Katie has a lead for me.
Needham. That's me. I'm going to stay with Heidi. Steve's comments are, are quite true. So there, there are external skills that she is less proven in than Katie. Nevertheless, I do believe that in the long run, I'm speculating that the quiet leadership is going to be the more important factor, and the, and the other stuff will hopefully be easier to learn. All I know for a fact is that personality-wise, either of these women would have been better for me than the superintendents that I dealt with in, in my teaching career. I'll say that right away. I am leaning towards Heidi. I do like her special ed experience. I like some of the statements she made. I like the way that people talked about her. I like the way that people talked about both of them. But I especially like the way the recommendations and the people in the visit talked about Heidi, and that's where I'm going to stick at this time. Alice from Stone.
I'll just make one more comment. I, I guess I'm sticking with Heidi as well. I'm leaning towards Heidi. And again, I really liked Katie Whitaker. When we went on the tour, the tour was quite fast-paced, and the students were determining the pace, and Heidi let them do that. She did not interfere with their schedule. She didn't slow them down. She let them just determine the pace. And I watched that and thought, you know, here's someone who's a team player.
Any final questions or comments, School Committee members? Because I think we are coming close to having a vote. Very well, yes, any?
No questions.
Okay. So I have a few question, a few comments on voting. Okay, it won't take long. It's only like eight pages. Only eight. Eight, nine point. Okay, so the vote is a, one of our weighted votes. Who's, who's going to be calculating it? Is that Julia? Yes, great. I hope your spreadsheet is really working well today, Julia. All School Committee members can participate in vote deliberations. The way we do it is we're going to put the vote, and we're going to see if there's any more deliberations, and then chats are both needed, and then come to the vote. However, the member from Dover must abstain during the actual vote since she was not present for all three interviews, and that was our process. Even during the vote, when you say abstain, but I would vote for whatever so that the people in Dover know how you have been doing your job for them. Now, after the vote is taken, if there is an obvious winner, but the vote was not unanimous, the chair may ask the committee for permission to reconsider the vote. This should only happen if the members who voted no believe that the chosen candidate is a strong choice, even though that candidate was not their first choice. It's not necessary, but in that manner, we could have a unanimous vote, which is, of course, the start of the support for a new superintendent. Now, if, whenever you believe that the candidate is not one, that would be a good superintendent for Minuteman, then you should keep your no vote. So I'm going to ask the School Committee if they want to reconsider that way. You can vote how you want to go, and yet make your vote unanimous, unanimous, unanimous in the end. You don't have to do it. You can just say, one person says, I don't want to reconsider. We don't reconsider. But keep this in mind, and I know that you already know, but I'm going to say it for the record anyways. It is the responsibility of every School Committee member to support the chosen candidate in being successful, even if that candidate was not their choice. And you've all already said that that's, and I, I mentioned this because it's not always been true. But it's going to be true with this group, that whoever is the winner of this election, of this vote, that's the person that we're going to select. If we come to a candidate, then Pam and I, the chair of the School Committee, the chair of the negotiation team, are going to go and have, we have the, the phone number. We're going to call the selected candidate and ask them if they want the job, essentially. And to, which hopefully will be yes. And then we're going to, and then I'm going to be in touch with you soon. And then, after that, we're going to maybe clap for a minute, and then we're going to have an executive session, which is not going to be very long. The purpose of the executive session is to launch the negotiation process. We want a short, if possible, negotiation process because, again, we want this candidate to be involved in the principal selection process. So we have to kind of wrap it up in a, in a little timeframe. So we're just going to talk a little bit about the process, create a few meeting dates. Ha, there was just everything you wanted, right? More meeting dates. And then we're going to wrap it up. Okay? So based on that, I'm going to ask somebody to make the following motion. We move that Heidi Driscoll, based on my statistics here, be appointed as superintendent of schools for the Minuteman Regional School District, subject to the successful negotiations of a contract of employment mutually agreeable to the candidate and the School Committee and signed by both party or their designees. Who would like to make that motion?
So move. Second?
Second. Discussion. Any further discussion before? And I'm going to ask for a roll-call vote on this, even though it's not particularly, it's not theoretically needed. I think it's appropriate to do a roll-call vote. Any further discussion of the motion on the table? Very well, then, in order by town. Pam.
Well, with enthusiasm, Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matky Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover abstained, but I would support this candidate.
Charlene Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Mostow Lexington with thanks to all very qualified candidates, but yes, I do support this.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Austin Luca, yes.
Okay. So that is an unanimous vote. We don't, you save time. We don't have to go through reconsideration. And Pam and I are going to go to a little separate location and have, hopefully, a brief, successful phone call, and then we're going to come back. It's better to, we, we just do it there, and then we'll, we'll come back. Yeah, it's.
Is the, is the meeting for the public pause at this point? How does that work?
The, they can, they can, at this point, they can stay. They can do what? It's going to be very short, assuming that, you know, she's there and she says yes. Thanks to all members of the School Committee for their efforts and the, the quality of this process. So they were all watching.
I assumed, I assumed they were. Yeah.
Let's see, I have one more thing here. Okay. So I believe our business in this regular session is now concluded. So I would like a, I think all we need is Julia to remain with us, I believe. So I would like a motion to enter into executive session and not to return to open session to include only the School Committee members and Julia for the following reason. A, only A tonight pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, Section 2182, for the purpose of discussing strategy as it relates to contract negotiations with non-union personnel, namely a superintendent-director. Can I have a motion? Second, any discussion on the motion? No, roll-call vote because it is, to enter into executive session does require a roll-call vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Matky Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlene Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Stulven, yes.
Okay, thank you all, all visitors, all recording equipment.
John Leves, just a special thank you.
Special thank you, John. And let's have it in a round of applause for a successful process.